Time being.
Level Design Group.
Time being seven thirty, I'll reopen a special public hearing for a special permit filed by Level Design Group for parcel property known as thirty-eight United Drive. It's for a special permit, and this is a continuation of a public hearing which was first opened on November the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. There's a representative here from Level Design. I'll ask him to introduce himself, and it's been so long. I know we've had a couple of meetings in between, but let's just kind of start and bring us up to speed, if you would.
Okay. Since we last met, we made some revisions based on the review engineer for conservation. We got reconservation, we got approval. The revisions are fairly minor. Addition of some snow storage areas. I think we just expanded this area, added some area in here. Really wasn't a lot left to work with. I think as far as the layout, that's all that really is. Add to that. We had to revise our phosphorus removal counts. Didn't affect the plan any. We didn't have to revise anymore. So we added some inspection reports, fairly minor things. Double great cash base and... Yeah, I think that was pretty much it. Ball aims in the stormwater report. But the plan revision for fairly minor. I said the snow storage areas on the layout and a couple of labels, inspection reports. And that was pretty much it.
This is the parcel that has the sewer treatment plant on it?
Yes.
Does this affect... Is any of it on this parcel? Or is it all on its own parcel?
The field?
Yes.
Yes, the field's all on its own parcel. This parcel here, I believe. This dash line is... But yeah, I think this is this parcel here.
So this is thirty-eight. So the septic is on forty?
Forty's here. This parcel over here.
Oh, so it's to the rear of it?
Yeah.
They have a sewer treatment plant.
Yeah, the treatment plant was designed for three thousand people. I'll take the liberty to see. They had them on a roof with all those buildings.
And what is the building? What is going to be the use of it?
Warehouse, storage. Beyond that, I'm not sure.
Okay. So it's... Because normally on the warehouse, we have a list of conditions and so forth, so.
This is under water protection, right?
This is water protection, yeah.
So we'll just have to list the can do's.
Yeah. And recording and so forth. Have you got... Is the other plan the parking plan?
Yes.
Okay. Can you draw over that with us?
Sure. The car parking is all in the back here, and the truck, the trailer, storage and parking along the building here. And then there's drive-in ramps on the ends, retaining wall between. It has a total of one hundred and fifty-three spaces, six handicap accessible. It's a requirement of one hundred and forty-one based on the building. As I said, we show snow storage along the front where we could, and this grassy areas. Handicaps along the back of the building.
Is wetlands even initial?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're...
Over in... At the back of the building.
Yeah. We're right to the buffer. We're not in the no-stirb at all. Close to the no-stirb here, but we're... We're not... Building's out of the buffer.
So are there drainage in the building?
Sorry?
Any drainage drains in the building?
No. Just the only drainage. We just have the roof drains.
Well, because that goes to part of our stipulations. If it was drains inside, it would have a tight bag. It would have to be pumped and inspected.
No, just... Yeah, just roof leaders split fifty-fifty, and this, I think, just bypasses directly. It gets treated, and this goes to the infiltration system here.
Is it all warehouse, or is a part of it going to be office space?
All warehouse, as far as I understand, I think. With this one, I'm not a hundred percent, but I think this is all warehouse. Thirty-five. Actually, number forty, I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I asked a question about the parking before we move on? If you wouldn't mind just going over the parking, I'm just coming up with a different calculation.
Okay.
So it's for the space, so the three hundred and fifty thousand square feet for every thousand, I came up with one hundred and thirty parking spaces required, plus the amount required for the employees. And I came out with fifty-three needed for the employees to total one eighty-three.
Fifty-three. All right, one second.
Yep. No, it said that there was one hundred and sixty employees on the mega shift.
I apologize. I think that's the typo. You're calculating for it, obviously. I just think that I... I just missed it there.
Hundred and sixty employees. Wow.
Yeah. I know we had figured it for thirty, but I didn't correct. One hundred and sixty. So the ten should have been based on thirty, so one thirty-one plus ten would be around one hundred and forty-one.
Plus ten for the employee spots?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So that should now one sixteen. Should be corrected to thirty.
Okay. So if the board was inclined to approve it, I would just say that would need to be revised in the final.
Okay.
What was the total, Tracy?
It was one... So you added ten. So you had one forty-one?
Yes.
So one forty-one is the total.
Now, you've got... How many... Are they... Are these trucks just going to be coming in, or are these... Are they running trucks here where they store the trucks here at night? During the day, somebody comes in and gets in the truck and hooks up to a trailer and delivers out? Or is this just over the road storage? Because you've got space for twenty-seven tractor-trailer spots, plus another fifteen store trailers. So how many employees... Well, you say the thirty.
Mm-hmm.
But you're not sure exactly what's going to be in there. So what are you basing the thirty on?
Honestly, I just got that. That's the number I was informed. I'm not sure. I don't know on the...
But the person who gave you that number must have had an idea of what was going on in here, so to have based it on. So I'm kind of backing into the question. You say you're not sure of it, but we're looking at a potential here. If, you know, just say two-thirds of these have always gone, so there'd be eighteen trucks here. So you need eighteen drivers for those besides what your warehouse personnel, and you've got to have some office, I would think. You've got to have a receptionist, and you've got to have some staff. So I'm just wondering just where these numbers are coming from, and if they are adequate enough.
I mean, if it's an LTL-type thing, it could very well be trucking companies bringing their full trailer in, emptying it. I mean, dropping it and taking an empty trailer from the other side and leaving, which is like... I mean, that's like re-blocking places used to do that. They used to... They didn't... The tractor never stayed hooked to the trailer. They would just...
Yeah, but if you got...
Bring in full, take out empty.
Yeah.
But that's... That number of parking spaces for a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and fifty square foot warehouse, that's a lot of material moving in for something. Nobody knows what's going on. How tall is it going to be inside?
I'm not sure of the height. No.
Because if it's any type of conveyor system, you've got to have the height, because you've got to have place for the product, and you've got to have place for the conveyor system and racking.
We kind of move... We also do site plan approval with it, and that's kind of where we... The portion we are in. If you're... You know, what does this have to do with the aquifer?
Sure.
It doesn't. We're kind of talking both things at the same time, but the bottom line does... It does... You know, it comes together, so.
I mean, it also depends on what type of... Whether it's dry storage. I mean, it could be a warehouse full of paper products, or a warehouse full of cap products, depending on what's going to be in there.
Yeah, but if, like... As long as it stays in its original package?
Yeah, as long as it's... Yeah, as long as it's DOT package.
Yeah, as long as... And we put a restriction of no repairing vehicles and stuff like that with this, and no opening, no mixing.
Yeah, open transfer of stuff.
Especially liquids of concern. It isn't allowable use. It's a... We have a lot of up there, so it's nothing out of the ordinary. And apparently, one hundred and sixty employees is a lot of people.
And then you said thirty.
No, but it says one sixty on the plan. It's a drafting typo.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, for a modern warehouse, to have that many unless you're going twenty-four seven.
Yeah. You know, that'd be a production... Even a production land, even.
Because everything now is computer picked. If you had a person picking every product... And that's why Chadwick's had three thousand people up there, because they had individuals picking everything.
But the thirty doesn't sound out of for something like that. As long as you haven't got thirty truck drivers going out, and then you've got more in there, too. But going in and out, but when they come in, they've got to pack... They've got to pack their automobile or the pickup truck someplace and get in and work out.
Well, the tractor... Yeah, but most of those tractor-trailers probably aren't going to be company employees. They're going to be in-transit people.
Yeah, which is fine.
Unless it is a distribution, then it would... That's a different issue.
This has been before ConCon?
Yeah.
And everything is...
Yep.
Straight and down.
I just saw on the plan that the building height is noted as forty-five feet.
Height? That's a reasonable height, because you've got racking.
Oh, yeah.
And if you've got conveyors and stuff, you need the height. You figure out a pallet is forty by forty-eight, but most cases, four feet. So you're going to go up, unless you got like that one they used to have at Chadwick's, where they had that high-rise type setup. You're only going to go up twenty feet, maybe.
And we don't want to have like what happened at the old ice skating rink when they put the bucket loader punched a hole in the roof, because they were up on so much. They had all kinds of recycled stuff in there on top of it, and they punched a hole in the roof. So if... If we approve this and part of the approvals states that it's our duty employees, do you have any problem with that?
No.
Okay. Because I believe you when you say it's a typo. You know, it's a... For example, I really don't have it.
And I mean, it could go up to as much as, I think, sixty if we have to... Backwards it's at one... Based on what we have. It was twenty-two, so sixty-six.
I mean, it's more than enough parking, because unless there was going to be retail space there. I mean, people coming and going to work, it's... And everything's so mechanized now that...
When you get a minute, Jim, I've got a question for you. they've put a nice plan together.
It might upset the spotted turtles or something. Might be too bright. They'll think it's daylight.
You know what we've got to start using, for an example, for lighting? You know how we want them on the building?
Yeah.
Is in the back of the police station. And one they've got there, it comes out, and you can see it, in my arc, right in that general area. And in looking at it, you can't even see the light, but you can see the glow down.
But you know that lighting has changed so much with these LED setups compared to the conventional, when we were started all this stuff. I mean, you can basically almost pinpoint a certain spot with an LED.
You know, this is... When you look at all these zeros in here, and up against the building, they got night... I think he's... Probably has the lights, like I'm telling you, got a high intensity grid underneath where they are, and then they spread out.
And another big thing that's happened, it used to be they lighted things up for security. Now, every... All cameras and everything are all, you know, got night vision type stuff to it, so you don't need to light the parking lot. They can see you there because of the way the cameras are now.
And on the lighting plan, where's the street?
Right here.
That's it. Okay. All right. I don't think it was out here, but I just wanted to just be sure. Okay.
Yes.
Now, this is the... Jim, this is the widest street in town. Do you think the thirty-foot radius for the trucks coming out is adequate?
Yeah, probably.
Because it's...
Anyway, I was trying to check my scale, and I'm like, oh, that road's forty feet wide.
It is, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Next to Hatch Run.
Yeah, that's why two of them.
I think Hatch Run's wide.
Yeah. No, but that is... That is... There's two of them going down.
Building inspector, I believe, has concerns, and he would like to get ready to the record. Tracy has some... I think that's all we got.
We don't have any... Anything from last year, do we?
Well, we looked at the folder. Everything in the folder is what we have.
I just... Yeah, I get the folder. I just take a look while I read this, and if I can keep it close. This is from the building inspector. Has the following concerns. One, request a written mitigation. Employee training in case of accident, help discharge into water resource protection district, both inside the warehouse and outside in the parking lot. Showing plans where what mitigation supplies products that will be on hand in case of an incident. This would also include any of the tractor-trailers on-site fuel, oil discharge. The... They shall... They should have... He doesn't have the Y on the dust. That's why I'm trying to figure what... They should have a small shed outside with the minimum mitigation supplies, speedy dry sorbents and absorbent pads, biohazardous sorbents such as pillars and mats, disposable bags of bin. Okay. And number two, if applicable, install ballads around any gas meters. Is this going to be heated with gas? Probably it is. It's available.
I want to look at the utility. Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay. Do you have ballads out there?
Um...
Well, I believe you've got to have ballads around all your utilities, because it's going to be underground, so that means the transformer's going to be... So they're going to put ballads around there. They're going to put ballads around the meters.
We don't have them, but yeah, we'll be there with the ballads. I think we only have parking unrelated ballads.
I know the gas company's very hard on that one.
We are.
Fire chief is, too. Okay. And number three, request the following language be included in the decision. Pre-construction conditions. A prior to any construction on the site, whether or not pursuant to a building permit, but excluding any work associated with continual permitting and citing you, the apps can shall be delivered to the board a check in the amount of ten thousand dollars to be used by the town building inspector to retain outside experts for technical review and construction inspections required under these conditions. Said funds shall be deposited by the board in an account pursuant to national laws, party for this section, fifty-three G, and shall only be used for technical reviews and construction inspections associated with this product. Any unspent funds shall be returned to the applicant with accrued interest, which it won't be. The banks don't pay any money anymore, at the completion of the product. If at any time the amount retaining in the account falls below twenty-five hundred dollars, the board shall inform the applicant, and the applicant shall forthwith deliver additional funds to reestablish the account to ten thousand. Said funds shall be used by the building, town building inspector to hire civil engineering, graphic engineering, or other design, engineering, and construction professionals that the building inspector shall deem reasonably necessary to ensure compliance with the conditions hereof and any state building code requirement. Number five, if the owner contractor wants, we shall schedule a pre-construction meeting with all of the code officials involved with the project to ensure everyone is on the same page and streamline the process from permitting to work.
We went through this with the one on Manly. He wanted a similar thing, and I thought it was discussed. It wasn't a planning board issue. It was him before. An issue with him as far as he can ask for all this stuff under his building title. And he says the board shall collect, have deposits. He's the one that's having deposits, because we remember the lady that was from that warehouse that's going up on the left there. She says it's usually the building department itself that requests it from the... It's not requested through the planning board. I've got nothing with it, but I mean, it's... Other than it... It has nothing to do with us.
Yeah.
I mean, it's for his duties. He wants the money to be able to hire people. I mean, it's not like we're asking for it so we can review the construction, you know, the drainage and everything, which I believe that all falls under the ConCon now.
Yeah, that's already been...
But I mean, building construction and all that stuff, I thought fell under him, and it needs to be requested by him or negotiated by him with whoever wants to do the building. Because as it stands right now, all we know is going to... There's going to be a building. We don't know what the interior structure's going to be.
And they're all engineered plans. The structural engineer, that's... They're all designed there, because if he wants to review it for some reason, he can. I know we didn't really get that straight and down, did we?
I mean, that's something that, I mean, it should be brought in either as a bylaw or a rule of his office that's part of the permitting system.
Yeah, I know the last time, did he say it on this one, too? But the last time, do you remember, he wanted us to collect the...
Yeah, yeah. He wanted us to know, and even the woman that was here who was representing their company, she turned around and says, I've never heard it that way. Says, yeah, we write checks. You know, we turn checks over to the building department for inspection purposes, but it's not through the planning board.
Yeah, I was not being with that on Manly.
Four eighty-six?
Five eighty-six.
Five eighty-six?
Oh, okay, because I think we put that, something like that in the decision. We got that, so.
I think we changed it, didn't we?
I'll have to go back and look.
Yeah, I think we did. I mean, we did. We took... Yeah, we...
Recommended it be done, too.
Be done through him.
Yeah, go through the building department.
I can understand if he doesn't feel comfortable with doing it, that he wants to hire somebody to do it. I can understand if he doesn't feel comfortable with doing it, that he wants to hire somebody to do it. But it's, I mean, it has nothing to do with us, I mean, I don't wanna put our name on it and have something fall down.
Yeah.
Sounds like it goes for Tracy's department.
Yeah. She's writing notes.
Inspection services?
What's that?
What's your compartment?
Inspection services.
Oh, there we go.
She's pretty good writing left-handed, so she's, she's taking notes very quickly. She can type with her right hand.
I mean, building's under that technically, right, or...
Yes, yep.
So...
The only inspection that we would have had would have been whether the drains were put in right.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as once, how they build the property, how they...
It's pretty much out of our hands, it's not like a subdivision, that would be under us, because we...
But that would be like us having to ask for money on a subdivision to hit, to cover expect, his inspections of the house.
Yeah.
For the construction.
In fact, does he even do it? Don't, don't they, the engineer, do the inspection and, and certify to the, the design engineer on...
On subdivisions?
No, no, buildings of the house. Because, because this is above the, the building inspectors, and the, the magnitude of it is above. Yeah, I, I think it's all done by, by the architect and, and the structural engineer.
Yeah, they certify.
And they certify, and, and, and he, he accepts that, you know, he goes and has a look at it and stuff, but he, he doesn't go around.
Yeah, I mean, we do it to mastodot all the time, and they don't, they don't check our work. They certify that everything's been done.
So I'm kind of...
I mean, once you got an engineer that stamps the plans, it's, that engineer's responsibility that it's built according to the plans he, he certifies. I mean, you might have to hire maybe somebody with more structural knowledge than the building inspector for technical aspects of it, but it's not something that I see we, us making.
I think Mike's more interested in the dope portion, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I...
I mean, everything else would be, uh, under your skin and your responsibility or...
As, as a civil, but, but the architect, who's the architect on this?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm thinking more of the building plumbing, structural, whatever, whatever, you know, building structure does.
I just don't think we have any power to require it.
Yeah.
The only thing I can see is we just put a, on our, at the end of our permit, that, you know, fees, fees for inspections will be handled through the building department, something like that.
Well, which he, which he does, he gets a, he gets a hefty check for, for a square foot. I forget what it is for, for square footage, but the, these buildings, what this is, what, three and a half acres? Yeah, three, three and a, three and a quarter maybe?
Yeah.
Three, three and a quarter acres of building, that's a, that is a big building.
Yeah, Chadwick's is bigger, fifty.
I don't know, I don't think Chadwick's, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
But...
Walk at it two in the morning.
I think we're there, I think we just have a couple of, a couple of little questions. We got one, in fact, if he changes the, the number to...
Parking.
Parking for thirty, we'll, we'll forget that. And this, in fact, we'll give you a copy of this, you know, like the mitigation shed that he wants out there and, and stuff like that. Put that on there.
Okay.
Then, then we don't have to put it on there, and it's, because we're gonna, one other thing we're gonna say, it shall be built according to the plan, and if you've got it on there, we don't have to go listen about every, every little thing. And then the, um... The contractors won't, won't be able to, well, I, I never saw that, I only saw this.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's going on a lot of plans now, but still, the, uh, what do you call it? Has this materials coordinator, which is the fire chief, is supposed to be notified if there's any spills anyways.
Yeah, but it's, it's nice to, to have, like the speedy drives or something, they're right off, because the, the truck driver can, can spread that before the, before the, the fire department hangs up the phone.
Unless he knows how to speed shift and get out quick.
It could be too.
I, 'cause they're required, I mean, if the fire department comes and uses one bag, and they use a hundred bags, they're required to replenish the town, any spill.
Yeah. No, but I, I, I like this, the idea that it's...
Oh, no, I got nothing against it, but it's...
You know, it's like the first aid kit in the, in the backseat when, when, you know, you get that bandage right off before anybody gets there.
Yes, it's World War II, woman.
But, okay, so, uh, let, let's figure out what it is, and then we can, uh, we'll enclose the hearing because we can come back with it. We'll have a chance to formulate the concern, because I am not concerned, uh, conditions.
I mean, whoever the owner of, of the building of it should be talking to the building inspector and, and satisfy him personally, not something through us.
And, and I will talk to the building inspector, because that was a while ago that we saw that.
Well, we're gonna see more of them.
I know, yeah.
I think we're gonna see one on Lincoln Street.
Oh, yeah.
I'm surprised we didn't see the one just up on Manly Street. But he's started jumping in on that, at that public hearing we had for the one on Manly Street.
These, these big warehouses, that's, I think it...
I mean, it can be well over, I mean, never mind, I mean, he's got, he's doing all inspections in town. If he has an engineer that reports back to him, could be an on-site guy. I mean, the...
Okay, so, uh, let's give you, well, do you need a copy? Can you remember what I said?
Sure, I'll take a copy.
Okay. Somebody who's, can get out, get...
That can read the machine.
And get those, we'll, come back next time, we'll have everything ready. And we'll, we'll go through the vote and be done, but I think you're, you're pretty well there, everybody seems to be...
And when you're coming with forty, now you know what needs to be on forty.
Right, yep.
Uh, let, let's say, this is the third, it'll be the first, first meeting in May, okay? Come back, any problem?
Um, sure, I, I just couldn't remember, I thought we were scheduled for June for forty, so...
Do you want to, no, what I'm thinking to, to clean this up?
Yeah.
Make those changes, and come back, and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll read through, through the conditions. We have, I think it's four things we have showing it's not detrimental, it's conducive to the neighborhood, blah, blah, blah. Do we have to read through all of those when we take our vote, and then we'll take the vote in the...
Then I'll step.
If you wanna wait until June and do it together, fine, but if you wanna get it out, out of the way, it may...
We'll do May, and then, I don't know, possibly, depending on how it goes with forty, if we can present forty, then we'll advance.
Yeah, just, uh...
Do we have anything else on that third? Did we set a date for something, or is it the, the next, the fifteenth?
I don't know.
I wanna, something's sticking in my head about, we got something...
Maybe thinking about the, the bylaw that got withdrawn of, maybe that's, 'cause I think we were...
Well, no, that would have been, we would have had to be acting on that.
Which, which, uh, the seventeenth is the cyclone.
Okay.
Um, if you wanna come in with forty, let, let me know the Thursday before the meeting.
Okay.
That way, because Donna and I talk on Friday morning to finalize the...
Agenda.
The agenda, because the agenda has to be posted first thing Monday morning. So she has it already, and when she goes out Friday afternoon, she gives it to him, so that it's, we make, we make the time. I think so, just do it Thursday.
Okay.
Any, any changes, in fact, that's why I gave you, I called, any, any changes, uh, do it. That way, we, we have it posted and everything's legit.
Okay.
Okay, um...
So which meeting, and then do the...
What's, what's the first in May, May, May three? So I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing to May the third at seven thirty.
So, moment.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
For the unanimous of the four present.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we ever get any more information from the team?
All set.